I'd like to call this August 5th, 2019 meeting of your Grove City Council Ward, 7:00 PM. Autumn please call the roll.
Mr. Lang.
President.
Mr. Marmy.
President.
Mr. Rath.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cos.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Present.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
And Mr. Labutus.
Here.
We have everyone here this evening. Would you please stand for the invitation by Mr. Labutus to offer a vote of flag allegiance.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, as we come to prayer today, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us another day to serve you and serve the city. I just asked, as we pause this evening for prayer, that we would remember the residents and the families of Pasa Texas and Dayton, Ohio. And I would ask that you would help us to return, as a nation, to a respect for life in all forms, and that you would help us to remember how precious life is. I ask you to view those conversations this evening, and helps them to be pleasing to you, and help us to keep in mind your vision for our city. These things I ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please drop me into flag allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, united on and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Labutus. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's the time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda tonight. Do we have any? Next, we have the minutes of our July 15, 2019 meeting. Do we have motion to approve those? Motion by Mr. Labutus.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. All in favor, say the vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
That passes.
Thank you. We have one report this evening from standing committees from finance without objection. That will be received and filed. We have no reports from city officials this evening. Under communications, we have three from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, one new application for E.P.Z. Arcade at 17 Arcade, which the city has filed an objection, permit on the recommendation of the law director and the fire department. Another one is a new application for Best Fuels LLC at 14 Mount Vernon Road, and the other is a transfer application to Fishmore Properties at 126 South Second. Also, some not good news. Front room furniture on North 21st Street gave us notice that they will be closing and having a going out of business sale. And the Ohio EPA has issued an isolated wetland permit for 10287 Hazelton, Etna Road, and Metasquash. No objection. All those will be received and filed. Next on the communication tonight, we have Cody Pettit from the Ohio Treasurer Department. He has a proclamation for Mayor Hawes.
Yeah, hi. My name is Cody Pettit. I work for Ohio Treasurer Robert Sprague. I wasn't here for intembling ceremonies, so I have a proclamation here to recognize Nork. A proclamation because they've won the, uh, guys won the, uh, one of the best hometowns. It reads, "It is with great pleasure that Robert Sprague, Treasurer of Ohio, extends his congratulations to the city of Nork in honor and celebration of being one of Ohio Magazine's 2019-2020 Best Hometowns. In receiving this honor, Ohio Magazine recognizes the city of Nork's tremendous commitment to the betterment of their community through its historic preservation efforts and a welcoming downtown filled with shops and art avenues. The city of Nork provides residents and visitors with a warm sense of community involvement. It is important that economic development and community advancement be honored. Therefore, I am proud to recognize the city of Nork for its devotion and commitment to building a stronger Ohio. The Treasurer wishes them many years of continued success."
Great. Cody, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And thank you, Treasurer Sprague, for that. Yep. Thank you very much. Let's get the sirens out when we do these things. All right. Thank you, Cody. Good timing. Next on the agenda, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for comments from citizens. One is now, and one is after the legislation. This is not a debate with council or a question and answer period. This is just your opportunity to be heard. Do we have anyone for this first section of citizens' comments that would like to speak? If you would, please raise your hand. Young man?
Yeah.
Could you just give us your name and address for the record?
Okay. Uh, my name is Haven Browning, and I'm from-
And you're gonna have to speak real loud.
Okay. My name is Haven Browning, and I'm from 114 South Second Street. Good evening, everyone. My name is Haven Browning. I am 11 years old and going into sixth grade at Parrot's Excellence Academy. I have been at Parrot's Excellence since kindergarten. At Parrot, we are taught to live every day through health, harmony, and service. I am here tonight as a service to my part of the community, the South End. I have lived on the South Sec-, on South Second Street as long as I can remember. I like the work that was done downtown. I think the new downtown gave it more life, and is, and it is enjoyable to live here now. However, with a positive always comes a negative. Downtown renovations increased the traffic on South Second Street. The increased traffic has posed a great risk to mine and my little sister's safety. The last two years, my greatest fear has been to get off the bus and cross the street to my house. My mom has had to stand in the road to make cars stop. My bus driver sent tourists to bus in the middle of the road. My cars will pull up on the curb to get around, to get around. One incident, I crossed with my little sister, Hadley, while trying to open the gate to our yard. A van pulled up on the curb to get around her bus, and I was hit, Hadley. Last year, I got really sick at school. I didn't want to leave school and go to the doctors because I was afraid to let my sister ride the bus for fear she would get hit by a car. My mom, the nurse, and the bus driver all had to assure me before I would go to the doctor. I have lost pets due to the increased traffic and speeding. Walking to baseball practice at Mount City only three minutes from my house has become increasingly dangerous. I can no longer walk my dog around the neighborhood, which is my after-school chore. When I asked my mom who I should talk to about all the new traffic, she said to come here. She also helped me research solutions. I bet everyone is waiting on me to ask for a stoplight. I'm not. My research showed that stoplight would increase the speeding issue by 65%. Drivers would want to make up for the lost time spent stopped at the light. The best solution to the issue is altering the roadway, much like the roundabouts downtown that my mom hates. Instead of a roundabout, my, I am asking for speed bumps, two speed bumps from directions leading up to the intersection of South Second and Fleet Avenue. Speed bump, speed bumps would maintain the flow of traffic and increase safety for myself and other kids. I ask city council and city safety officials to please look into installing the speed bumps. I will be back for the second council meeting in September and hope that a plan is on the agenda. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. I expect you to see, see you sitting in Mr. Blake's seat in about seven years. Sorry. Ma'am? That's a tough one to follow.
I wish mine was actually on a better note than what I have to share. My name is Natasha Husky. I live at 42 Oakwood Avenue. Um, my fiance has lived there for more than 25 years. We have a neighbor that used to have a house there, and it burnt down. It just has a garage. You can no longer build on it or anything. It's too small. Our problem is, for the last couple of years, this gentleman has been allowing people to live in his garage with no water, no sanitation, no nothing, no electric, anything. There's also been children that stay the night there with no heat. Um, also, um, the people that come and stay there, we have been having issues with them getting onto our property, vandalizing our property. We do maintain part of that yard there where he allows us to park. However, when people are in that garage, they come over and make themselves welcome to our vehicles. We have also had his nephew, who he has allowed just recently to move in there, into the garage. He's painted it different colors. He's worked on it, you know, everything else, trying to make it look presentable, and then decided to destroy it. On top of that, we've had people every day, last year, when they, um, finally arrested the gentleman there, living there, um, excuse me, I'm sorry, nervous, um, we had him arrested. The other issue is that when there's no sanitation going on in this garage, they actually leave their feces and, their feces and urine in a five-gallon bucket. They leave it along our fence and sometimes on our privacy fence. We also have drug deals going on at this garage. You can also see them smoking, uh, drugs through the windows. They, um, allow several people to come out late at night, probably about 10 to 12 people sometimes, and they'll be partying throughout the week, and you can hear everything right at our window. Granted, it's a little bit, you know, back near the, our backyard. The problem is, is that the owner has been dealing with the city for a couple of years now, and they were just recently out there for the same issue. Um, we've talked to them. We've called the police. The last time they were out here was about, I think, two, three weeks ago. They had two other people in there sleeping and confirmed they were, you know, they were in there. We called because there was children in there, and it was extremely hot. The police are getting upset with us because we keep calling. We only call whenever there's a welfare issue, they're vandalizing our vehicles, they're leaving needles, drugs, everything there. So it's not fair when we're doing everything we're supposed to as law-abiding citizens, and we can't keep our property looking nice and free of meth heads or anything. It's just getting ridiculous. The owner also, um, has been on drugs and is on drugs. We have seen him, um, speeding until like midnight, 2:00 in the morning, mowing the alleyway instead of the yard. Um, he also allows, um, we have a woman that is his ex-wife, allows her to come onto that property and get onto our property and destroys everything and trespasses. We've had the police out, and they said the only thing we can do now is get a CPO on that to stop that part. The other problem is, we keep contacting the city, and they just keep going through the same routine. As soon as they're done dealing with him, he's right back at letting people come and live in the garage. We've had people all last year stopping at our house, asking us to help them break into that garage to retrieve their stolen items. Um, we've had people stop there, who is sent over there to work on there, asking us to use our electricity to fix it up. We can't afford to do that. I've done everything I could possibly do. I have the recordings from the police. I have police reports. I have everything. So if someone wants to get with me, that would be great. We're just asking them to do something about this. Um, he has offered us to, we've offered to buy it off of him to prevent further issues. And, um, he's just, he likes to play games. So we're, we don't know what else to do. We just want to get rid of the problem. That's all we want. I don't know what else to do.
Thank you. I know the Chief of Police is familiar with that address, because after you and I talked, I did talk to him about that. Maybe it's a Health Department issue also. The, uh, the big, good-looking guy back there in the white shirt, if you'd like to, that is our safety director. Maybe if you'd like to chat with him out in the back on the way out to give him the information, that would be great.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's move on to resolutions on the second reading, 19-53.
Resolution 19-53 by Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Rath, Mr. Frazier. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard your second reading of 19-53. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lang.
Yeah, I'd like to make a resolution, uh, motion to adopt resolution 19-53.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Lang.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 19-53? Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Oh, excuse me, Ms. Hall. Sorry. Excuse me. Mr. Labutus.
Yes. 19-53 passes 10-0. Next, we have resolutions on the first reading, 19-54.
Resolution 19-54 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cos, Mr. Frazier. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
19-54.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy.
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution 19-54.
Second. Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Cos. Mr. Marmy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we have some payouts in here and some bills that need to be expedited because they, um, in order to get units and things like that immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Autumn, please call the roll to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
And Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
Two-day reading rules to waive. Mr. Marmy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt resolution 19-54.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 19-54? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
And Mr. Labutus.
Yes.
19-54 passes 10-0. And that concludes our legislation tonight. Pretty quick night for legislation. Next, we can go to comments from citizens. This is your second opportunity. Do we have anyone who would like to speak this second opportunity? Please raise your hands. Ma'am? Ah, too late. Ma'am? Nancy.
Nancy Waylu, 7441 Stewart Road, Newark. First, I want to thank this young man for coming to council tonight and being civically engaged in your city. That's the most awesome thing ever. We try and teach that in the Freedom School about being engaged civically, and you just showed all of these adults in here what it's like. Thank you.
Thank you.
I love it. Um, so last March 18th was the last time I spoke. Uh, several of us came to council to speak about the unsheltered in the city. In preparing to speak tonight, because I like to be prepared, and I'm not a real spontaneous speaker, I looked back at the minutes of the March 18th meeting to refresh my memory on what members of council had said that evening. It was a really long, whoever typed that, I don't know if it was Autumn, but God love ya, you know? I do the same for my department, and, um, Mr. Frazier spoke of volunteering at the vertical 196 in the Newark NAS and visiting the Newark Homeless Outreach, which he did. Um, we saw him there. He also, Mr. Frazier also stated, quote, "So at the end of the day, what it seems to me that we need is a better coordination of the individual needs of people. With Mental Health America, Salvation Army, St. Vincent, uh, the closed closet, food pantries, free meals, how do we communicate better and inform people of the services that are currently available to provide for their immediate individual needs? The second piece is providing health, recovery, and job opportunities for people to transition them to a more sustainable life. The next piece is temporary housing, to get them out of the tents and into something more permanent. The last piece is permanent housing. When it comes to the items that I heard, uh, tonight, this is still Mr. Frazier speaking, how do we best coordinate? This is not all of the city. There's limited budgets, limited opportunities, and there are social service agencies that are closer to the need, that are better aware. How do we better coordinate with the pieces that we have? Those are the next three things that I'm going to do this week and next week to be a better-informed councilman on the subject at hand." End quote. I guess I would ask Mr. Frazier tonight, and I don't expect him to answer me tonight, if he accomplished all his tasks that he set for himself almost five months ago, and has he seen a better coordination of services, including, uh, the grassroots? Mr. Labutus and Mr. Lang stated they were happy to see the grassroots speaking to, that night, and that we should all come together. Mr. Lang also emphasized what Mr. Frazier stated about the groups coming together and the coordination of services. Mr. Marmy stated he was excited to see all the groups come out and collaborate and work together. So I thank you for that. Mr. Rath also stated the need for coordination of efforts regarding the unsheltered. Mr. Rath stated he would love to donate food, but did not know the regulations on doing so. I'm not sure if you ever found out what you can donate, Mr. Rath, but you can donate whatever you'd like on any Saturday from 10 to 1:00 at the Newark Homeless Outreach, located at the corner of Buena Vista and East Main. Currently, besides food items, there's a great need for bikes and tents. Mr. Blake spoke about the need for coordination of efforts also, and the need for transparency, and I would agree with that, Mr. Blake. So putting all this together, what I heard from that night was the need for the grassroots groups to come together, and also for there to be coordination of services to help the unsheltered, when you break it all down. So I waited about six weeks to see if anybody would coordinate things, and then I sent an email to several grassroots groups and asked, "Hey, do you want to have a meeting? I'll facilitate it. I'll make the agenda." So we met. In this Freedom School, we strongly believe that bringing people together, sharing stories and ideas is a powerful thing, and uplifting, and most importantly, educational. The Newark Homeless Outreach, John's Helping Hands, The Champions in Community in Action, The Crossroads Crusaders, The Think Tank on Poverty, The Freedom School in Lincoln County, and Pastor and Mrs. Perry have all been to the four meetings that we've, we've had since May 2nd. We've talked about different issues, but one of the things I keep telling these folks, the biggest thing I've seen is the exchange of information with each other, the vast amount of information that these folks are getting off the street. We've been collecting what I'm going to call tonight "life events" from people who have contacted these groups over the past few months, who need different types of services. We'd like to share these, uh, stories of these folks reaching out to various groups with you tonight. Sometimes these groups can help, and sometimes all they can do is give them a phone number to an agency, and sometimes we can do nothing. Because as grassroots groups, we really don't have the financial means that social services and other, and the city has. We rely mostly on donations and some small grants. I would ask that you listen to these stories tonight, as it really paints a picture of the need of your fellow citizens. I know that the Tactical Group on Homelessness has received three requests for proposals. The grassroots group were instrumental in getting a person on that tactical group, and that's Linda Mossholder. We've also been attending the Warming Center Task Force meetings this summer that meet at 7:30 in the morning, I might add, that I, and Linda have been going to. Don't call meetings at 7:30 on a Friday. Please. Uh, I, like others, read in the Newark Advocate recently and saw Jay Hoddinger announce that a group of people, according to the Advocate, 16 people, have gotten together and are buying a building on East Main to do something for the unsheltered. I will say, I was somewhat troubled that none of the grassroots groups that I mentioned tonight were either contacted or a part of the 16 people that came together to talk about the unsheltered. The building, the building that the Evans Foundation, uh, is purchasing happens to be next to where the Newark Homeless Outreach sets up each Saturday to help the unsheltered and the working poor. I personally have been volunteering every Saturday for about the last five months at the outreach. I can tell you, the people that come to the outreach are a reflection of our society, all of us sitting in this room. They're young, old. In fact, we have three older couples that come almost every Saturday to get lunch and any type of groceries that we, we set out. Uh, we have employed, unemployed, housed, unsheltered, those dealing with alcohol and drug addiction, mental illness, and medical conditions. So they're like us, sitting in this room. All of us have family members, or maybe some of us have some of these issues. I would also say, not only do we need coordination of services, but we need more services for these folks. We have a low unemployment rate, but wages aren't rising as fast as expenses, especially housing costs, as we know. The poverty rate in Newark is a little bit over 20%. It's like, I looked it up today, 20.3%, which means a fourth of your citizens are living in poverty. That might be why we see 75 to 100 people every Saturday at the outreach, which is a lot of people to serve in three hours. We need transportation so folks can get better pay, to get to better-paying jobs, and we need more low-income housing options. I know in March, Mr. Bub mentioned, um, there was going to be some low-income housing being built on North 21st Street. I'm not sure if that's still happening, or if it's going. The median income in Newark is a little over $40,000 a year, and roughly a third of Newark has an income below $35,000, according to the American Survey Census. So I'm hoping for that low-income housing, but I'll, I'll, I'll be interested to see actually what the rent is going to be, as far as 30% of some $35,000 a year is not that much. And now, Chris Gargis and I, I'm going to call Chris Gargis up, if that's okay, Mr. Ellington?
Well, yeah, his hand up, so we'll just go ahead and ask.
Sure. We're going to read these stories.
Oh, you're going to do it together?
Yeah, we are. Go ahead, Chris.
Hi, I'm Chris Gargis. I'm the Director for the Champions Group, which we just talked about earlier. I'm at 103 Swainford Drive in Heath, Ohio. We've been working with, uh, the grassroots groups now for, well, the Hopeless Outreach for over a year, year and a half, and, uh, we've seen what's going on downtown and, and the city and vicinity, even Heath is even having this problem too as well. So I want to let you know real quick that we're, we're a 501(c)(3) based group here, and we're a non-residential recovery, and we basically work with, with people that are in addiction. But what we noticed the last couple of years is, it's turned from being just addiction, it's turned into being people that are low-income and don't have any money to buy places and can have places to stay, and they end up being homeless and on the streets. So we have another group called the Community National Group, which you mentioned earlier, which is like the outreach arm for champions. And what that group does is, that group actually takes the finances for that, that problem and tries to help the people out temporarily. We'll try to give them hotel rooms, uh, we'll put them up, you know, in the Salvation Army. We'll send them to the Salvation Army. We'll send them to whatever hotel is available, and we'll try to get them a room for a couple nights until they get on their feet. And then, um, we have other ministries within, within the, the Newark area that can maybe help them out with jobs later on down the road, as far as being able to be employed and stuff like that. They're, they're kind of another small group that I'm working with on the side as well. We're all trying to just make it happen, because what's happened, these guys are so desperate. You know, you've seen it. You know what it looks like. And I feel so bad. I'm like, dang, we can do something for you. I said, "Well, go down to this place and see if they can help you out." And then sometimes they find help, sometimes they don't. But that's kind of what we do. So what's, what's happened with our group in, over the, over the last, actually, last two years, um, here's an example. Back in September of 2017, a man's mother reached out to us. He was homeless and staying on our back porch. Uh, we referred him to Refuge, and on 9/24, he went into Refuge due to a drug addiction. Uh, he left the Refuge days later. We paid for a hotel room for him, and he became, um, he came, he came home, and then we bought a bike for him to, uh, to get a job and to be able to get around. And then later, he sold the bike, relapsed, and went back into drug addiction again. So we kept on staying on him, and kept telling him, "Hey, you can get through this, you can get through this." And finally, he went into an outreach in Ironton, graduated 2018, and he is right now working. He's got his own place, and he's doing very well. So there's completion in some of these stories, which is really beautiful, and I love that. And I just really feel like, I just want to say this, I just really feel like that's how, that's, that's the Lord's heart. He just wants us to help these people get back where they were. He just wants us to help these people get back where they were. You know, I mean, even if they're addicted, even if they're crazy-acting, and you see them tweaking, whatever, that's not who they are. Okay? Who they are is who God made them to be, and that's to be successful and to be able to be part of the community and be effective. And we really feel these stories, just they encourage me, I read them over and over again, because it encourages me to realize that we're doing a little bit, even if it's one person at a time. And that's only how Jesus did, it was one person at a time. So that's kind of how we roll. Another example was a homeless couple came to a meeting after an outreach. Both were chronic homeless. They've attended Wednesday night meetings for a year and three months now. During that time, they had a child who became property of the state because they were defined as chronic homeless people. Through their struggles, we've helped them, guided them through their lives, and as of April of this year, they are now married, they have a home, and they're striving to get their child back. So there's another sign of completion, and I just love to see these stories come out like this. The man himself had been homeless for well over 10 years. So to go from a chronic homeless situation to where he's at now, to me, is a huge victory, and I could just thank God for that, because He's the one that's kind of steering us and showing us how to talk and how to work with these people. It's so cool. Another man met in front of a church, it was a warming center. During the wintertime, we were with the warming centers at the churches that were down on the east end. He was struggling with alcohol, and he was ready for change, is what he told me. And I said, well dude, I said, I know a guy who can hire you, he's a professional painter. I said, no guy that will hire you and probably get you a place to stay. Are you ready? So he went for it, and right now, he is employed with that person. He goes to all their Bible study meetings in the morning, and he is currently an effective person in the community. He has his own place, has a full-time job, and is doing really, really well. So again, here's more completion. There was another man released from prison, and back in April of this year, came to his first Champions meeting, connected right away. We directed him to a possible workplace with another ministry, and he was staying in St. Vincent de Paul. He is now employed, and as of 7/22, he is now getting his own place, he has a voucher. So again, completion. So the pattern is, if we just take some time with these people and go through and try to work, sometimes we've got to, you almost have to walk hand-in-hand with them almost daily. My phone goes off, I'd say 10 or 15 times a day at least, and I'm sure these guys can relate. Everybody in this room is in the same boat. We're constantly talking to, hey, there's this guy that has this, and there's this guy that's had that. Yo, well, send them here, and we're just constantly moving with this. This grassroots thing is really amazing, what it's doing, for not being funded. I mean, my total income from our group is $160 a month, that's donated money, and somehow we're paying for, you know, $1,000 of the hotel rooms in three months. How's that happen, except for the grace of God? So it's happening, it's really cool. Another guy, put homeless couple up for two nights at the Budget Inn, female member of the van, gave them a car. We purchased initial insurance payment for them to get them started. They started working to get their own place, until the female relapsed. We have not heard from them for a while. So there are some stories that don't have completion, but we're still in touch with this guy. We wanted, we want him to win. Couple came to a meeting needing help with food and ID, sent them home with food, purchased the man's ID at the DMV the next day, later took the woman to the DMV, got her permit, and we have contact with the couple, and she's, she has a baby due, a baby due in October, and they have housing too as well. So they're in pretty good shape. Another homeless couple came to us to a meeting, was search of shelter. We put them up at a hotel, and we helped them pay for a month in that hotel, to be able to stay there for a while. And so we're waiting for them to get, they're waiting to get another place here eventually. They just paid for a month upfront, so they had a place to stay so they can kind of stabilize a little bit. And some people do that. They'll stay at a place for a long period of time and just kind of stabilize themselves a little bit. So we're just trying to help them out. This is a really cool one here. Met a couple at Easter at church. The girl used to attend the youth ministry, that was youth pastor in back in 2014. He had only been clean for 30 days, she was clean for about a year. Both had backgrounds of a lot of trauma and abuse, hers being the worst. She was a foster child, and when I met her, she was a foster child, I met her back in 2014. They both wanted change, and we directed them to the Employment Ministry, I was talking about earlier, and they both connected well, they're still with them. They were married in May, and we began marriage counseling with them right away. They are both currently employed and have a place to stay and are taking steps to retain custody of their child that they lost due to their drug addiction. So we're just continuing to move on here. We were notified by the homeless outreach for a couple needing shelter. We put them up at a hotel in Heath. I directed the man to the Work Ministry. We went there and put the family up for a couple nights. We referred them to the Salvation Army, and they were accepted in. And that was a good move, because he has a family, he's got, it was a wife and two kids, so they were in desolate need. During this stay, the man got a job with the Goodwill. He's doing much better, and as of July 15th, they are now in their own place. He is still working, and we're in constant contact with him. Another one, this is a really good one here too. This is Pastor Perry, we were talking about earlier, he had a guy in front of his church that just went bonkers on some flakka one night, and to the point of tased. So we went ahead and put him in a hotel for two nights in Heath, and then on that Monday, Pastor Perry took him to the Refuge, which is in Columbus, which is who we're attached to, is who our group came out of, is the Refuge. You guys have heard of them, probably, they're really good. Right now, he is already in phase two, and he's doing very well, he's very successful. That's a really good story, I love that. And one day, he'll be working with us, hopefully, with our Champions Group as we move on through things, we kind of duplicate each other, so. All right.
I think we're getting the idea.
You good?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sure, sure. And I was, basically, I just want you guys to see that it's a collaborative, it's all of us working together to make this happen. I would never have known half these people if these guys didn't tell me about them. So it's like we're all just working together, and it's really, really cool, because like I said, there's not a whole lot of funding here. But it's okay, for now. I mean, I'm sure there's a plan for that down the road, but it's just lovely to be able to see the success stories for that, and I really do thank you guys so much for your time, and I'll see you, thank you.
Did he have more?
She's got more, yeah.
Do I have a time limit?
You're probably past it, but you know, you want to do a few more, go ahead.
Well, I have several I'd like to do.
I'm sorry.
I have several I'd like to do. I'm just asking, do I have a time limit?
Well, it's at my discretion, I guess.
Okay. Gotcha. The ones that I'm going to read are from the outreach, John's Helping Hands, Tressa couldn't be here tonight, and there's also some, a few from the Think Tank. The Champions have been very successful with their programs. The people that contact the outreach are a little bit different from what I've seen in my limited work with them. So a woman came to the outreach and asked for help for paying, she needed $100 for rent at the Budget Inn. She and her husband were not only staying at the Budget Inn, but they were working for the Budget Inn. She had medical issues. They ended up leaving the Budget Inn because they weren't being paid, and I'm not real sure what their status is. We've heard that time and time again, folks will go and stay at some of these hotels for work and not be paid, they can just stay there. And then sometimes they have to actually pay a fee to stay and work eight hours a day for these hotels. In my opinion, that's a level of human trafficking, if you look up the definition of human trafficking. Another outreach, woman reached out to the outreach and stated she's currently homeless and living in her truck with her children. She's on the waitlist at the Salvation Army and is called St. Vincent and other churches in Newark. I know St. Vincent has reorganized some of their funding, and I don't believe their funding as much as they used to. Is that correct, Leisha? The funding has changed a little bit?
No, 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 we're not going to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. Anyway, sorry about that. Another woman reached out to the outreach, her time was up at Salvation Army. She needed a place to stay for a few days until her permanent place was ready, but the Salvation Army, you can only be there so many days, and when your time is up, your time is up. She started a job in a few days, but had no money for shelter. She didn't call St. Vincent. I'm not sure if she received help from St. Vincent or not. We had a married couple who'd been homeless for a few months due to rent increases of $200 a month. They had their tents slashed by, I'm not sure who, and they had no ID, and they really couldn't get into the Salvation Army because the husband had a fourth-degree felony for drugs. John's Helping Hand, she found two women with seven children between them, living under a tarp. Tressa takes a lot of folks home with her to Buckeye Lake and feeds them and shelters them. She also, Tressa, with John's Helping Hand, brings in 200 meals a week every, it's either Sunday or Wednesday, I think it's Sunday, and she cooks them, and she has a team of people, and they distribute them out into whoever they see in the encampments. It's over 200 meals. And so she took those folks home with her. Tressa also got a report of a man, a man messaged her for help with housing, a housing voucher, anything. He'd been living in his van. We directed him to Vertical and LCH, Licking County Coalition of Housing. That's all we really knew to do. It was also, it was reported by our firemen to me that there was a man living at a closed gas station on Cherry Valley Road near Main, that gas station, which something's going on there now. The man had went to the fire department asking for help. He had been drinking and stated he was an alcoholic. The fire department transported him to LMH. We get a lot of folks reaching out to the outreach for shelter. This woman was eight months pregnant. All we could do was give them St. Vincent hotlines and the, you know, the 211 numbers. Because there's really, we don't know what to tell these folks if they're unsheltered. Had another person reach out who was homeless. Outreach gave the man the Havens Shelter number, and he was able to get in. This was a success story for the outreach. He has a car, but no money for gas. Outreach was going to buy some gas cars and give him some, and they encouraged the young man to go out to Harry and David to apply for a job once he got gas in his vehicle. John Helping Hand, Tressa goes out into some of these tent encampments and feeds people, and it was reported they had nine, this was in June, they had nine new families that are homeless with children in the tent. I don't know what you want to call them, encampment cities. There was some, also a few veterans whose tents had rotted away, they were in dire needed tents. We always are getting calls for tents, and Chris is really good about finding tents. Any of you have old tents that you'd like to get rid of, or bikes? I'd be more than happy to come and pick them up. Like I said, a lot of people, well, some, like this couple, they reached out and they were homeless, and I personally do not know where any of these tent encampments are. I don't want to know, quite frankly, but sometimes they're directed to some of those places just for shelter, because it's better than living under the bridge, I suppose, which would be kind of dangerous. Let's see. We had a woman who reached out in late June to the outreach who'd been beaten by her spouse. She's afraid to go to the Batters Women Shelter. Not sure of what that outcome is. Like I said, we don't have as many positive outcomes, or known positive outcomes, as the Champions do. The man whose house was burned down, I can't remember, recently this summer, we gave him clothes and a $40 gift card, the outreach did that, because when your house burns down, I believe Red Cross only gives you three days of shelter. And then he lost everything. And then recently, actually, we heard that all his work tools were stolen too. So that was just another, like, nail in the coffin for that person. So we try and go out, and if people need water, if people need hygiene products, clothing, Trish and Jen and Peggy and the outreach folks and the Champions and Tressa, they're constantly, like Chris said, their phones are going off constantly for this type of help. Recently, somebody contacted Trish and said, I have a job, but I need a bike to get to work. And so I put a thing on Facebook and said, hey, any of my friends, you got a bike? And within about 20 minutes, a friend of mine from Dennison said, yeah, I have a bike. So I went and got it, drug my husband with me with the truck, and we took it to her, and we were all crying by the time we left, because now she has transportation to get to her job, which she just got. And this was a woman, I would say, who was about 40 years old. So the spectrum of people that we're seeing and dealing with is, there's no one, I thought when I started getting into this, I would see a pattern of age, or, it's the full spectrum, from young to old to middle-aged. We're seeing it all, and I'm just puzzled by why? Why are we seeing all this? Why are we seeing more people that are unsheltered? And what can we do about it? What can the city, social services, grassroots, working together, what can we all do about it, is the big question? And are we doing enough? Every Saturday when I go home after being out there for three or four hours, when it's hot, and I'm the hot dog cooker now, and it's hot near the grill, I feel happy and sad all at the same time when I go home, because I'm happy that we service so many people and we're able to help, but sad that a lot of these folks need more. Last week was kind of a win. A young man, well, not a young man, he's probably in his 40s, who has been unsheltered that I've gotten to know by name, came up to me and said, I got into the Haven. And I'm like, that's great. Another person who's unsheltered, his bike, he needed a new tube. So a friend of mine came up and said, hey, you guys need anything? And I said, well, that guy back there needs a tube for his bike. So she went and got him a tube and a pump. Those are small things in our world to some of us, but it was huge for that young man to have transportation to get around. So I could go on and on, but Mr. Ellington probably doesn't want to hear me.
I think you're correct.
Hey now.
Give me a couple more, and then we'll go.
Hey now, we're friends. Friends. Come on. I have been here for, talked for four and a half months, I got to make up for it. I'm sorry. Recently, the outreach was contacted by a woman who just got out of prison and wanted to get a shot of, and I'm gonna, I don't, I'm not, Vivitrol, but she didn't have her medical card yet. I didn't even know what Vivitrol was. This is a learning experience for me. The woman applied for a medical card while in prison. Well, when you're in prison, you don't have a mailing address, because when you get out, you don't know where you're going to live. It's like that double-edged sword thing. Linda Mossholder drove the woman around due to a lack of transportation to secure necessary services, and I'm going to segue into that, if it's okay, Mr. Ellington. Well, I could go on, but I won't.
The question would be, so you're done, and somebody else is coming up? If that's correct?
Maybe. Yeah, yes. Yes, yes. Thank you for your patience.
Who else would like to speak back here, besides Trish? Anybody else?
Linda Mossholder, and I reside at 224 Green Meadow Drive in Newark, Ohio. And I'm just going to go into what happened after we picked this young lady up. First of all, we actually, Newark Think Tank helped her stay for two nights at a motel in Heath, because it was, we encountered her on a Saturday, and nothing's open until Monday. So on Monday morning, I picked her up. When you're usually released from prison, you're given a state ID, a picture ID. Through some glitch in the system, she did not get her picture ID. So without a picture ID, you're unable to get any services. So what we did is she did have a photocopy of an ID, so we figured we would start out at the Bureau of Motor Vehicle Services. So, and I just want you to keep in mind the picture of where these different places are. So we went from Heath to the BMW, BMV, and the lady there was very nice and said, I'm sorry, we really can't use this, but if you go get your birth certificate, you know, we could probably help you. So somebody told us we could go to the main place and get a voucher for a birth certificate, because that costs 25 bucks. So we went there, the person who does that wasn't there, but she was supposed to be at the Haven, so we went there, she wasn't there. So I said, let's just go to the health department. Again, they were very nice, we got her birth certificate. Went back to the Bureau of Motor Vehicles, and we were able to get a photocopy of her state ID. So we went from there to Job and Family Services, because she needed to verify that she was indeed enrolled in Medicaid. They did verify that, but they cannot give you a picture copy of your Medicaid card. It has to be mailed to you within the next five to seven days. Again, this person is homeless. We went from there to the Housing Coalition, because she was told by a staff member at the Housing Coalition that she qualified for the Returning Home Ohio program, which is a special program for people with mental illnesses to get special services through the Returning Home Ohio program. The person that she had talked to was no longer doing that service, so I said, well, can we speak to whoever's in charge of it now? And we were told that person was not in the office that day. So we went from there to the main place to do an intake, and for some reason, the main place was closed early that day. So we left there, and since she needed a Vivitrol shot, which is medically assisted treatment for somebody who has had an opiate addiction. We went from there to BHP to see if we could get any assistance there. We were told that she would have to complete an assessment, and I said, well, when is the soonest she could get in for that? This was on, all this happened on July 22nd. The next appointment for an assessment was on August 31st. So I said, "Ah, that's not good enough. Is there anything else we could do?" And we were given an option of possibly walking in the next Tuesday at 7:30 in the morning as a walk-in. Later found out that that wasn't an option from somebody. The person at the desk was new, so she gave us some information. So we went back to my place and called Shepherd Hill and we were able to get her in for an intake in three days. She was able to do that intake. In the meantime, we went back to my house where she called, her Medicaid provider was Care Source, called them and got all the information off her card so she would have that available in case we were able to obtain any other services. I also emailed the Licking County Housing Coalition and asked about the Returning Home program. I'm, I will not redo the next four pages of the different things that we needed to do to get her services. So yes, there are services in Licking County. I am not criticizing any of these, these places who are trying to help anybody, but in order to receive services if you're homeless, you must meet the definition of homelessness. And you, then you are, fill out an application either at BHP, you can fill it out at the main place, after you have had an assessment and become a client. You must have that done first, or at the Housing Coalition. So once that's done, you are put on a list. You must remain in a homeless status until your name gets to the top of that list. So if you are number 99 on a list and you are staying at, say, the Salvation Army and you cannot get into the Salvation Army unless you have a photo ID, you must remain either on the streets or at a shelter until your name reaches the top of the list. So when we, and I'm not saying that Licking County does not have good services, it does. And we just don't have enough of them and we cannot get people into them soon enough. I will just say one more thing. This morning, I took this young lady to Shepherd Hill because she is now a patient at Shepherd Hill. She has gotten her shot and she has to go there every so often. While I was waiting for her in the lobby, there was another young woman who was sitting there. She was sitting there with like a laundry bag full of clothes and this young, the one woman I was with, and I'm not going to mention any names, knew her. The woman who was sitting in the lobby looked horrible. And so she, she was asked why she was there. And she was pretty excited. She says, "I'm here because I need detox. I called and got an appointment and I'm going to get in." When I picked up the woman I had dropped off, she said that the woman was not able to get in for detox because she didn't have the right insurance. So here was a woman who was ready to stop using drugs, made the decision on her own. She was not court ordered and went in to get detox and could not. So I immediately basically emailed, basically Mental Health and Recovery and said, "What can we do for this woman? We could either drop her off at the emergency room and they will determine whether or not she needs detox, or she could go in for an assessment at LAPD to see if she needs it and then maybe we can help." So I just want to, this is me who can take her every place going through this. Just imagine what she's going through. And if you ask where she's staying now, she's staying in one of the bedrooms at my house because I cannot put her out on the street. So I just want you to know, when you say that there are a lot of services and it's easy for people to use them, that's not necessarily the case. So I just wanted to give you a day in the life of somebody who's trying to get services. One of the, and Trish will either read it if we have time, but a couple of weeks ago, one of the members of my church drops off frozen water at the outreach quarter, quarter every week. And what she did is she brought a friend with her, and this friend was from Connecticut. And I will pass these out. This is a copy of something that the friend of hers wrote, and this friend is a pastor in Connecticut, of her impressions of the outreach corner. Thank you.
We have this lady back here. Who else? Is that it? Daniel?
Hi, Patricia Perry, Newark Homeless Outreach, 282 North 21st Street, Newark, Ohio. I won't read the article, you can read it. It, it is just basically, I, we didn't even know they were writing the article. And it's the caring corner and it talks about everything that we have to offer there. And one of the things that I'm running across right now is, you know, we had two overdose deaths last week. We had three overdoses in 12 hours. I don't know if they were deaths or if they were just overdoses and they lived. So today, I filtered several calls of people needing treatment and they don't want Licking County because Shepherd Hill cannot get them in. So I was able to give them information where they can go to other places and, and try to get into detox. People are scared now. It is, it's getting brutal out there. And that's why a syringe exchange program is so important. I'm not going to go into that because I'll start that back with the health department. But we do have other things that are out there. We offer Narcan that I am trained both with Harm Reduction Ohio for the intramuscular Narcan and I'm trained with the Licking County Health Department for the nasal spray. I also have fentanyl testing strips, which you can test your drugs and tell if it has fentanyl in it. And if it does, then we encourage people to make sure they have Narcan, they don't use by themselves, they use less. That's harm reduction. We're trying to keep them alive so that they can make it like this one young lady did. So I know the young lady also, I've known her for many years. So a good thing, an ending to, not an ending, but she texted me that night after she had spent the day with Linda. So she says, "I talked to my mom today and she's so happy for me. It was good to hear her tell me she's proud of me. I can't even remember the last time she told me that or when she even had a reason to say that. It's nice to have people rooting for me and so thank you. I had a good day. She spent some time with some people in recovery." And she goes on to say, "She's only got one, very few friends. Everyone I know is still actively using, so I can't be around them and I've lost so many friends to overdose. Again, I realize some of them were probably never my friends. So it was nice feeling like I have friends again and people to talk to. And keep praying for me because I know it's not going to be an easy journey. I have a long way to go, but I'm definitely trying." So there's where we stand with the homeless outreach. We're working very hard to keep people alive for another day as well as to get the service, the gap in services for the, you know, food, shelter, tents, whatever it may need. I also sent all of y'all an email. We will be holding our fifth annual International Overdose Awareness Day Rally. Actually, we have so many informational tables going to be there this year, they don't even fit on the page. So, you know, we had 42 overdoses last year. The last time I got the coroner's report, there was like 13 that were usually a couple months behind. So we as a city, as a community, have to look at this too. We got to start talking about it, not just at the health department, but at the rally. Come listen to the stories, the people that have lost their children. You know, there'll be a lot of informational tables, there'll be people who are in recovery speaking about how they got there, and there'll be parents of those that have lost their children. There'll be a balloon release, candle lighting to honor those. So I encourage everybody to come. I've sent you all a invitation.
Would you like to say when and where that is?
It is August 29th, excuse me, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Canal Market.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Where? Let me ask you one.
The what? Hep A shots?
Oh, yes. And the other thing is, we partnered with the Licking County Health Department. They're going to be at the outreach on Saturday, this Saturday, the 10th, to give Hep A shots to everybody that is living out on the streets or is low income, no questions asked. They will also, they came back in February, did the first shot for some people, so they'll do the second shot because you have to have two. Because as of right now, Licking County has 60 confirmed cases of hepatitis A.
How many did you?
60.
Six zero?
Mm-hmm. That's what, according to the health department, so.
And where, one more question, I'll let you say. Where are the other places besides Shepherd Hill that you're referring folks to?
Sandsville has Cedar Ridge Behavioral Health and Recovery Works in Columbus, Sun Behavioral in Columbus and Columbus Springs. Yeah, that's Cedar Ridge, that's Cedar Ridge. And all of those will be at the rally too. They'll all be there with information to help people to get more information.
And behavioral health partners does contract with Recovery Works to help people get into detox after they go through an assessment either at LAPD or at the hospital.
Ma'am?
Beth Blind, 33 Summit Street, Newark. I'm here to advocate for a women's shelter. I work with Chris Gargis at Champions and Community Action and we see quite a number of people throughout the week and on Wednesday nights certainly and into the wee hours of the night sometimes as we're trying to give assistance and aid to people. And I do want to thank our police chaplains represented by Mr. Perry here. They, they do a great service. They really do. They're great. But I'm going to keep, try and keep my comments as benign as possible with present company. Prostitution is rising in the area.
Can you speak up?
I'm sorry. Prostitution is on the rise in the area. And as many as our neighbors that we see that are unsheltered, this is an even more hidden group because there's shame. There's an even deeper shame of, from what I understand, from the women and sometimes men that I've spoken with. They're living in great fear for their lives. And so they're, they're a difficult group to reach, but, but is definitely on the rise. Wherever you see drugs and theft, you're going to see prostitution. And it's just very important that, that we find a place for women. When Chris and I, when we are ministering or working with folks, we do our best to, you know, he takes care of the men and I take care of the women. But there's only so much we can do if they don't have a place. And, and when they leave me, I don't know where, what they're going because they won't tell me because there's a chance they may lose their life if whoever owns them finds out that I know. And so it's becoming, it's becoming more and more critical that we get this taken care of soon because it is growing. It is growing. I see more and more of women who are giving services to get shelter, to get drugs, to get food. When you run out of the things to sell, there's, sometimes that's the only thing that's left in their desperation. And like I said, I've been keeping track of numbers recently and it's more than doubling. And so, like I said, with present company, I will, I would keep it at that, but we do, we do need that women's shelter.
Thank you. Mr. Crawford?
Daniel Crawford, 163 South Second Street. I'll try and be as brief as possible. I wasn't sure I was going to speak today, but one thing that I was wanting to speak on was I remember recently hearing about this news regarding the old family dollar on East Main Street being, you know, bought out and soon to be converted into a, some kind of transitional housing or whatever for the homeless. My initial reaction was good, you know, there's some kind of progress. A friend of mine who talks to me every now and then at work, he mentioned that he had heard about this and, you know, I thought, you know, it's something moving in the right direction. But I analyzed this in a way of actually sharing a personal story and try and bring things around full circle because I want to cover a little bit of ground here, but once again, try and be as brief as possible. When I was about nine or 10 years old, my sister was riding a bike and she fell and the bike ripped into her skin and gave her a gash. And my mom, being a nurse's aide, she, she, one of her solutions for everything was butterfly stitching everything, which is, I'm not sure if you know what butterfly stitching is. It's a lot like a Band-Aid, but it's a, it's, it's not. So it's kind of like a combination of Band-Aids and stitching. But anyways, my mom tried to do that, it didn't work, so we had to get staples put on my sister's leg. I think it was actually a combination of staples and stitches. Personally, the mess that it made kind of traumatized me, so I can't really see a lot of blood now without being nauseous. Kind of makes me nauseous just thinking about it. But I bring that up because what we're dealing with regarding the homeless issue is a bunch of Band-Aids when there's a gash that it needs to cover up. Because what we have is a broken system. And that system needs to not be Band-Aided with one small solution after another, but we need to stitch it together by working with each other to try and fix this system. That is, you know, the question was asked earlier, what is causing all this? And it's that system. We're going to have a continuation of a growth of homelessness, whether they're coming in from other areas or not, because there's something broken. And part of what's broken is our sense of community, our compassion for one another. An apathy that is encouraged by this system, as it's been corroding over time, has been feeding into us not caring about the suffering of one another, whether someone's homeless, a drug addict, prostitute, if you will. There are things that lead to people doing radical things like going into drug use, selling drugs, using drugs, doing all these other stuff. I recently lost a friend, a childhood friend, I believe, to a drug overdose and it caused a huge shock to me. And it, it hit me and it took a while for me to recover from that thought because I grew up with this person. And, but I have, I've had compassion for people who've used drugs and who've been homeless for pretty much my entire, entire life because that's how I was raised. And if we want to truly deal with the homelessness issue, we need to not just rely on charitable organizations, as awesome as they are, coordinating or not, we need to find better solutions for the things that are not working in our system. You know, one thing obviously is people have a lack of living wage work here in Newark that they can get to. They have a lack of transportation, a lack of affordable housing. There's a whole host of things that lead to it. It's not one issue that produces this atmosphere. It was mentioned earlier that someone's house burnt down and they became homeless because of the small window of time you have of shelter before you can actually try and get back upon your feet. There's so many reasons that feed into homelessness. And this lack of compassion is also fed into other things as well for one another, like with respect to the immigration issue. We now hear certain political leaders more or less feeding into this mindset of, you know, that leads to chants of like sending them back or whatever. And I honestly find it absolutely repulsive. I cannot have my kids watch television with certain political leaders without having to fear that they're going to learn this deep seated hatred that seems, from which it seems to come out of. And when it comes down to, we've had these recent shootings. And the lack of compassion, a lack of empathy has led us to always resort back to, you know, our clubs, if you will. You have one group who wants to do one set of things, another group doesn't want to do anything. Instead of looking at it like we need to make things better for one another and actually working with each other to resolve these things. So that's a part of what's feeding into not resolving anything, is that we are encouraged by our system not to care about anything but what we have. And that's what I think we need to look at and assess together in order to actually begin to resolve these issues with one another. Thank you.
Anyone from the city administration? The Honorable Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll pass.
Thank you. Mayor Hall?
I will pass, thank you.
Mr. Wyatt?
Mr. President. Mr. Browning, thank you for sitting through a very lengthy meeting.
You notice his sister hasn't quite made it.
I know. I've got, I've got a couple of little, little ones too. And thank you for showing respect to what's being done here just by putting on the bow tie and coming down today. I, I think it's, it says a lot about the job your mom's doing raising you and, and your schooling. They come down here and be really well prepared and you definitely did your homework and we appreciate that you did your homework. Not sure how much you looked into how the city government's laid out, but you see, we've got the numbers by some of us. What that means is each one of us who has a number in front of us, we represent a different part of the city. And so the part of the city that I think your, your address falls in is number one over there, Mrs. Hall, Mrs. D. Hall. And so I would recommend you get in touch with her after the meeting and she can talk to you about next steps. And I can tell you what, what I do when folks get in touch with me is we usually talk to the engineering department because they have experts on how traffic flows through a different area and, and can help kind of take a look and see, hey, maybe what, what can we do and what makes sense. So hopefully you can connect with her. And the other thing I'd tell you is I was really happy to hear the way you were, felt so, it was important to you to protect your little sister. As I try to teach my, my son, I have a little daughter too, how important that is. that is. And I think you're going to get real far in life by really looking out for her the way you did. So you should really be proud of yourself for how you came to this body today. And thank you so much for coming. Ms. Waylu, and Mr. Gargis, and Ms. Mosselder, Ms. Perry, Ms. Blind, thank you for sharing all the stories that you shared. It sounds like the groups are really doing a great job of exchanging information, and I'd encourage you to keep doing that. Thank you for taking the effort to do that on your own. It did sound like there was a wide range of people that you described with a lot of different reasons for why they might be in the situation they're in. And Nancy, you kind of hit the nail on the head, and you just asked, why? We don't know why. And I think there's a lot of answers to those questions, but sometimes it can be easy to make assumptions based on conventional wisdom. And I guess the thing that popped into my head is, are there opportunities, because you guys are very trusted with the grassroots campaigns in a way that I think I wouldn't be trusted, or others wouldn't be trusted, is there an opportunity to maybe work with Denison or another research institution to collect data on some of this, to help us answer some of these questions? But anyway, I would just encourage you to keep going with what you're doing. You're doing a great job. So thank you for sharing those stories. Appreciate it. But that'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt, Mr. Marming?
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to call a finance committee meeting, and then pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marming, Mr. Raff?
Thank you. I'll call a service committee meeting, and pass.
Mr. Raff, Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, as I sit here, it's just listening to your stories. And by the way, I would listen to you all evening. I mean, it's the time and work that you do on a daily basis, volunteering, you're volunteering, your time, your efforts, your energy, you're coordinating faith-based groups, grassroots groups, all these groups, you're doing all that. So if we sit here for an hour, two hours, and we only had two pieces of legislation, so thank you for the work that you're doing. That is most appreciated. But as I sit here, you know, it's just a range of emotions. I mean, think about what we heard tonight. You know, we heard a young man who lives across the street from my mom, so I just know you guys well. But we heard him advocating, and we heard people who have advocated, who we've known for years advocating in our community, for improvement. Basically, you're identifying a gap that needs to be filled. And, you know, it would be nice to get those social service agency heads and you together, so that we can coordinate, so we can bring a better improvement. I mean, that's what we're basically saying, is like, how can we work to, you're here tonight to share with all of us, is like, this is your way of getting information out. You know, there's really no other structured resource for you to share this information, except for coming here to counsel. And so, you know, I just thank you for the work that you're doing. You know, you've identified so many, so many needs. I do have a time limit in my miscellaneous comments, saying they're going to galley me to stop. But I thank you for coming tonight. You know, thank you, and I can't thank you enough. And, you know, it is a bigger issue. I mean, we are seeing some efforts in some ways, but what is the bigger plan for housing our community? You know, what is the workforce housing plan that we have in this community? Not just for certain areas, but we need for each neighborhood. You know, where are we going with housing? You know, for senior citizens, for college students, for low income. So it's a variety of housing issues that we need. How are people getting from one place to another? You know, not only from their jobs, but for their medical appointments from other places. So how are we solving these bigger issues? And, you know, I appreciate you coming here, because oftentimes, it's not until Citizens' comments is when we, as a council, actually have a discussion about some of these topics, which frankly, a lot of us sometimes aren't, you know, we're not aware of on a regular basis. Some of us are more involved than others. But, so I just thank you. Thank you for your coordination. Thank you for doing what you're doing. And I look forward to continue to work with you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Mr. Bub? Thank you, Mr. Bub. Mr. Cost?
I'd also like to thank everyone for coming in. Very interesting information. For me, I won't speak for anybody else. I know how to reach the other members of council. I know how to reach administration. I know how to reach the non-HOPIC groups. It would be nice to have a list of the different grassroots groups that are functioning, and a contact person to know how to get ahold of them. Because I don't, other than Nancy and Linda, I don't know who else to reach out to. But it would be nice to have a list of all these different groups, and who to contact to
I could get to that.
reach out to. I appreciate that very much. I think we all would, in one way or another. And the young man who came, I can't thank you enough for coming. That's very encouraging. The first suggestion I would make for your neighborhood is to see if we can get some increased speed and traffic enforcement for the area. If there's that kind of a problem, we need to be looking at it. But that would be step one to me, and I appreciate you bringing us that information. Thank you.
If you could get that list on, so she can email all of us.
We're friends, too. She said, "We're friends, too."
Yeah, you know, why not go let that go?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Browning, thank you so much for coming tonight. I was very impressed by how well-prepared you were as well, and I definitely dig your bowtie. We expect great things from, you know, I think, in the city, and it's incredible to see someone so young be so engaged and so articulate. So thank you so much for coming, and for everything you are probably going to do for this community. To everybody else who came and spoke about people experiencing homelessness in our community, this is a multifaceted problem. I think we all know that. From people experiencing homelessness for a variety of reasons, people who are being trafficked, it does not discriminate. It does hit every single walk of life. And to echo some of the sentiments that have been expressed tonight by some of my colleagues here, it's important for us to be reminded, and that's exactly what you did this evening. Beyond sharing the hardships and the stories that will hit your heart, I also appreciated hearing some of the stories of recovery, because I think it's important when you're facing something so big, and seemingly insurmountable, to hear that it is possible to be able to recover, that it is possible for people to have hope, and that all of the efforts mean something, and can mean something to individuals. And so it just further underscores to me how important it is that we focus on harm reduction, until we can get all of the services and organizations we need together, because we need to help these citizens experiencing homelessness in our community, to survive until we can help them, until they're ready for help. So thank you for everything you have done, and thank you for coming. Please, keep coming, keep reminding us, keep doing the incredible work that you're doing. So with that, I'll yield.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Rager?
Mr. President, so I want to start by just kind of the nice times that we had tonight with the best hometown of Newark being recognized. The HHCA picnic at Park was a great success. We had about 40 to 60 people that came out, and kind of building that sense of community. The Newark Skate Park opening on August 24th. And so with that, I want to kind of talk about the topic today of homelessness. And the question was, what is my thoughts from March 2019 to today? And I would say, you guys talking with each other, sharing information and documenting stories, is absolutely a step in the right direction. And when we see the progress that is being made with the Licking County Transit Authority, as well as with the Evans Foundation, and the Licking County Land Bank revitalizing properties, I think that we are moving in the right direction as both a county and a city. And it is always going to be hard to say, are you doing enough? And is enough being done? Because it will never feel like enough is being done. But what the grassroots are doing are meeting people at the individual level, as you said, Chris, one person at a time. And what we're seeing is, with that one person at a time, you identify that need, you try to locate temporary assistance, and then you try to find a point of permanence in community from that. And Linda, when I hear you taking people into your house, it's very humbling for me, and the compassion that you guys have, and the love that you have. And I think that the next step, especially when it's never too hard to look at the winter coming, is looking at Jeff Gill, and the churches, and the pastors of the warming centers, the Evans Foundation keys, the transportation opportunities, the revitalization efforts, and the meal plans that was already distributed this summer, and continuing that in the fall. And when we see marginalized citizens, such as women with drug addictions or children, it is essential that not only do we pull them out and identify them, and try to give them the most opportunity that we can, but we create a framework in order to repeat it again and again. And so feel free to let me know what I can do to help, and what assistance I can lend. And thank you for coming, and please keep up the good work. And with that, I'll yield.
Thank you, Mr. Rager. Ms. Hall?
Thank you. I too would like to thank you for coming tonight. And I believe you are in my ward, so we could talk a little bit after the council. And I want to thank all of you for the work that you do, and coming tonight and sharing your stories. It keeps awareness going on. And thank you, then. We need that list of contacts, so. I just wanted to make one announcement. We have a new company on the square, which is kind of cool. It's Newark Cultural Arts Center. It's the building right next to La Roma, and it's just getting started. It started in January. I wasn't aware of it, I just knew of it. And I think it's going to be great for Newark to have a cultural arts center. He's already offering weaving, lens ceramics, it's a beautiful upstairs where the ballet used to be, ballet school used to weave. So it's a babe, but they're offering art lessons and painting lessons, and you may want to check it out. It's NewarkCulturalArtsCenter.com.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Labris?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things this evening. One thing I wanted to mention previously, I want to congratulate our Newark Fire EMS. They actually received the American Heart Association's 2018 Mission Lifeline Gold Plus Award. What does that mean? What that means is, in those critical moments, when they show up as EMS in between, when they are servicing patients and getting them to the hospital, they're doing the best absolute job they can at setting them up for the best possible outcome, once they get to the hospital. So really, the care they give in those critical moments is the most important care they'll receive, because it determines their end result. It is the highest award that is given by the American Heart Association. So kudos to our fire department and EMS for all the hard work they do in those most critical moments in someone's life. Secondly, I wanted to just publicly thank everyone from City Council, some various city employees, administration, for their prayers and support during the loss of my father about a month ago. Received a nice floor arrangement, and multiple visitation, text calls. So the support during that time from all of you was extremely important to me, and I appreciate that. As far as this evening, Mr. Browning, he did a fantastic job. I have a couple kids, a little bit older than you, and our daughter was born, who's a little bit older than our son. I told him the day she was born, your number one job in life, until she's old enough, is protecting your younger sister. And he's taken that to heart. He's 14 now, and he still will protect his younger sister. And so I appreciate that. Also, Mom, kudos to you. You've done a good job. For everyone else this evening, for the outreach, for the homelessness, I appreciate the success stories. In any endeavor, you have to celebrate the wins along the way. That's the motivation that will carry you onto the final goal. And so I appreciate hearing those completion stories, and the things that you're doing. And I appreciate what you do for the community. That, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. David, thanks for coming tonight. Good job, again, getting hold of Ms. Hall, and talk about that a little bit. I like the bowtie, I'll try to go with that next year, if I can see if I can find mine. You've done a very nice job. I've got three sons, and they're quite a bit older than you are. I'm not sure they could have done as well, but you did. I do appreciate Citizens' comments. You might not believe that, Nancy, but I do appreciate you coming and talking and Citizens' comments. I think that's part of your right, and you should do that. It's an important thing, to come talk to City Council. With that, our next meeting is August 19th at 5:45. Our next full council is at 7 o'clock that evening. Is there a motion adjourned? Motion by Mr. Cost, second by Mr. Labris, all papers seen, the public saying aye.